Good evening. We're to start the agenda review session for Wednesday, March 16, 2016, New Brunswick City Council. We have ordinances on second reading. 601, Orders to amend supplement to revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles in Traffic, Add. Section 10, 12, 125, Right Turn Only, Drift Street at New Street. 602, Orders to amend supplement to revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles in Traffic, Schedule 27. No parking certain hours, school zone, Delavan Street. 603, Orders to amend supplement to revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles in Traffic, Schedule 24, No Parking Anytime, New Street. 604. 604, Salary Ordinance, FMBA Number 17, For 2015 through 2021. 605, Orders to amend supplement to revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 3. Revenue and Finance, Provided for Riding from the Special Improvement District within the City of New Brunswick and to establish a District Management Corporation pursuant to NJSA 40-56-65, as may be, as said may be, amended and supplemented, expansion of Special Improvement District. 606-1, To amend 606. Orders to amend supplement to revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 3, Revenue and Finance, Chapter 3.28, Fee Schedule, Section 3.28, 120. Parks and Recreation Fees, amend Recreation Permit Fees, for time to fees.
It's Steve's. There was an error under the program listing for memorial stadium rental, which needs to be amended by resolution. And I have that submitted in your packet. That being the case, we would then move motion there after carrying it to the next meeting for second reading. My opinion, we can't adopt because it's subject to change.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Ordnances on first reading. Reading, 607, Orders to amend supplement to revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 13, Public Services, Chapter 13.08, Source Service System, Section 13.08, 340, Schedule A, Schedule of Charges. Resolutions 642, approved Agenda Amendment. 643, Approved Payable额644, Authorized Refund and Redeemed Back Sale Certificates. 645, Through Request for Street Closing, requested by Rutgers University Student Organization, Women Organizing Against Harassment. Location, George Street from College Wall Bus Stop by Douglas Campus to Somerset Street to College Avenue, Scott Wall. Annual March, Take Back the Night, Show Support for Survivors of Sexual Violence and Protest Against Sexual Violence on Campus in the Community. Date is Wednesday, April 13, 2016. The rain date is Thursday, April 14, 2016. 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. 646, Approved Request for Street Closing, requested by New Labor Education Training Institute. Location, Livingston Avenue, Sanford Street, Terrence Kilmer Avenue, Drift Street, Towne Street, French Street, Patterson Street, Spring Street, Church Street, George Street. March Commemorating Workers Memorial Day, Sunday, April 24, 2016. Times 4:00 p.m. to 5:15 p.m., Police Extra Duty. 647, Approved Amendment to Resolution R 021-663, Pay Additional Legal Fees in the amount of $16,258.90 from the Pond of Love for a New York City. Special Counsel, City of New Brunswick, Mark Marvack Construction Corporation, For $33,416.76 to $49,675.66. 648, Approved Request for Use of City Property, requested by New Brunswick Board of Congratulations, Lincoln Elementary School. Location, Beale Park Pavilion, Fields and Mansion Law. Lincoln School Field Day, Friday, June 3, 2016. Rain Day, Friday, June 10, 2016. Times 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. 649, Approved Request for Parking of Vehicles in Beale Park, requested by New Brunswick Park Resort Home. Location, Beale Park. Employee Parking in Beale Park for two events being held in 2016 at the Easton Avenue Facility. Date is Sunday, June 5, 2016, From 6:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Wednesday, December 7, 2016, From 10:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Number of Parking Spaces is 40. 650, Approved Purporting Temporary Incorporations for 2016. 651, Approved Transferrable Incorporation Rights for 2015 Municipal Budget. 652, Approved Amendment to Resolution R 021-616. Add a Rain Day, Sunday, June 19, 2016. Approved Request for Street Closing, requested by John Petroledo. Location, Mill Avenue between Lincoln Place and Beale Place for Wedding and Black Garden. Date is Saturday, June 18, 2016. The rain date is Sunday, June 19, 2016. Times 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., Police Extra Duty. 653, Approved Request for Use of City Property, requested by Deliverance Prayer from Bible Tabernacle Church. Location, Street Park, for Youth Gospel Concert and Crusade. Date, Friday, June 17, 2016. Sunday, June 26, 2016. Time is 5:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. 654, Approved Request for Street Closing, requested by Miles for Music Charity. Location, New Brunswick Porster Land Lane, Miles for Music Charity, for Sunday, March 20, 2016. Time, 8:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. Police Extra Duty. 655, Authorized Submission of Recycling and Punish Grant Application for 2015. 656, Authorized Certification of Amount Paid for Recycling and Manufa Act. Amount is $55,076.16. $3 for recultant pay now $18,582.22 tons of solid waste. 657, Approved Request for Street Closing, requested by New Brunswick Recreation, New Brunswick Tomorrow. Location, Washington New Brunswick City Shoes for Joggers. We encourage residents to walk, run, skate, or ride bikes in city streets for simple view. Date is Sunday, April 24, not October 2, 2016. Time is 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Police Extra Duty. 658, Approved Request for Use of City Property, requested by Refuge Christian Church Incorporated. Location, Beale Park. Field area by mansion, fare with music, games, space painting, and local organizations awareness booths and clothing donations. Date, Saturday, July 16, 2016. Rain Day, Saturday, July 23, 2016. Time, 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. 659, Authorized Award of Professional Service Agreement with Arthur Phil T. Ball, Jr., Escobar, Law Firm, Bruising Interment, Nashville, Murphy, for Special Constable of Police Department for years 2016, not to exceed $12,000, non-fund. 660, Approved Release of Performance Guarantee in the amount of $5,004.50. Tom Line Construction Corporation, Road Opening Permit Number 12837, Johnson Drive. 661, Approved Off-Purpose Rock for 50/50 at the Hilton, 10 Livingston Avenue, and George Street Wayouts. May 22, 2016. 662, Approved Off-Purpose Rock for merchandise at 75 Morris Street, or Lady Mount Carmel Church. Date, June 26, 2016. 663, Approved Off-Purpose Stator Time, New Orleans Stadium Grant Stand Renovation and Water Proofing. Specification Number 900-15. 664, Approved Off-Purpose Stator Time, for Coffee Bam and Pairs on the Delaware and Rhode Island Canal. Specification Number 8E-15. 665, Approved Fire Rocketing Agreement and Right-of-Way契契约, requested by CSC, TKR LLC, Businesses Cable Vision, of Rhode Island Valley, Wizors, Installation of Fiber Marketing Cable. Location, 46-50 Baird Street. 666, Approved Relaxation in the City of New Brunswick to Road Closure. Requested by Sky High, Representatives of Equipment, Wizors, Removal and Replace Equipment from the Roof of the Boston Building, 18 Patterson Street. Road Closure on Patterson Street between George Street Patterson Street, Exeter Church Street Parking Deck. Saturday, March 19, 2016, Baltimore Pigs. Saturday, April 2nd and April 9, 2016. Times 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. 667, Approved Work Contract with Allied Oil Co., LLC, First New Winter Diesel Fuel for Department of Public Works. 12-month period commencing April 2, 2016, ending April 1, 2017. specification number 503-16P, not to exceed $125,000. 668, Authorized Tax Payment to Transfer Overpayments on Several Tax and Utility Accounts. 669, Authorized Tax Payment to Cancel Certificate, Number 15-0232, Block 212, Lot 012, Lot 01. 55 Cop Stock Treat and Re-estate Utility Delinquents on Account. 670, Advised Consent to House and Kitchen Authority for Reappointment, Frank Simpson. Terms in April 3, 2011, five-year term. 671, Advised Consent to Rent Patrol for Reappointment to Airport, Name, Carmen Lopez, Homeowner Representative, expires December 31, 2018, three-year. Catherine Feaster, Baltimore Member, expires December 31, 2016, one-year. Alexander Leeres, Student Representative, expires December 31, 2016, one-year. 672, Advised Consent to Cable, Televisions, Citizens Advisory Council, Re-Request for Appointment, Name, Jennifer Bratchwell, expires December 31, 2018, three-year. Robert Melvin, Library Board Representative, expires December 31, 2016, one-year. Michael Bluff, Board of Education Representative, expires December 31, 2016, one-year. 673, Approved Resolution to Authorize the City of New Brunswick File Application to New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection and the New Jersey Environmental Infrastructure Trust for 2016 Water Treatment Plan and Approved Firing through the State FY 2017 Financing Program for the Warden Club. That's it. We have no light, discussion, or council, we have no hearing. First call, all, roll, voting to order.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Escobar?
Here.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Garlotti is running late. Council President Egan?
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the All Public Meetings Act have been complied with and satisfied and that the annual notice, which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings in the municipal council of the City of New Brunswick, has been followed by city clerk, and placed on appropriate rules before in the lobby of City Hall in New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper of the City of New Brunswick, namely the Old News Tribune. Please stand and present the motions.
The United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, a one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a moment of silence for our men and women serving here in our armed forces. A moment of silence for all our men and women who served in our armed forces and lost their lives in battle, any battle. We have minutes from February 3, 2016. Can I get a motion to approve those meetings?
Second.
Vocal?
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Egan?
Yes. We have ordinances on second reading. 601, Orders to amend supplement to revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles in Traffic, Add. Section 10, 12, 125, Right Turn Only, Drift Street at New Street. Would anybody from the public like to comment on this particular ordinance? Anybody from the public like to comment on this particular ordinance? Seeing none?
So.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Egan?
Yes. 602, Orders to amend supplement to revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles in Traffic, Schedule 27. No Parking Certain Hours, School Zone, Delavan Street. Would anybody from the public like to comment on this particular ordinance? Ordnance 602, anybody from the public? Seeing none?
Motion.
Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. 603, Orders to amend supplement to revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles in Traffic, Schedule 24, No Parking Anytime, New Street. Anybody from the public like to comment on this particular ordinance? Anybody from the public? Yes, sir, good evening.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, members of the council. My name's Charlie Cradaville, I'm from New Brunswick, and I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today. Can I just find out what the purpose of this is? Does this have to do with the bike lane, or it looks like it's a little bit different?
Mr. Wendy?
This is the council. This is an attempt with the right turn only at Drift and New to improve the traffic flow at the intersection of Kirkpatrick and New Drift. Specifically, we're only limiting three parking spaces along the side of the church there, just to improve the site visibility for people making a left out of Kirkpatrick onto New.
Correct. I think that's a great thing, it's a dangerous intersection.
Council. But also, make the intersection more pedestrian friendly. We're going to be doing some bump outs there that are done with some pylons, to shorten the pedestrian crossing distance there, so that you now have more visibility, but less of travel length across.
Makes sense, thank you very much.
Anybody else like to comment on that particular ordinance? Seeing none?
Motion.
Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. We have 604, the Salary Ordinance for FMBA Number 17, exploring six-year periods, 15 to 2021. Would anybody from the public like to comment on this particular ordinance? Yes, sir, Mr. Cradaville.
Good evening once again, Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. First of all, I think it's terrific that the firefighters are getting, finding a contract. It's a good step. I have a specific question, though. Does the city have any plans to create a new position for emergency management?
Mr. Cradaville, tell me what this has to do with the salaries that we're working on here today. We were trying to prove the salaries. If you have a question about a fire department adding another position, that's not the same thing. It's not the same thing.
Well, yeah, if that's true, can you tell me where that person would fit into this scheme?
Mr. Lockland, is there such a thing?
No, there isn't. The director, as we've talked a number of times, serves as emergency management coordinator. He's a management employee, so his salary would not be in this document that you're about to give.
And that's the way it's being perceived, with the director of laws?
I have no reason to believe it'll change on 2016.
Thank you.
So there's no plans to promote someone else or create a new position?
That's what he said, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to comment on this particular ordinance? Seeing none?
Who's the ordinance? Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. 605, Orders to amend supplement to revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 3, Revenue and Finance, Provided for Riding from the Special Improvement District within the City of New Brunswick, add to establish a District Management Corporation pursuant to NJSA 40-56-65, as same may be amended and supplemented, expansion of Special Improvement District. Would anybody from the public like to comment on this particular ordinance, please? Yes, sir, Mr. Cradaville.
Good evening once again, Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. I want to, first of all, thank Pam Stefannik from the City Market for helping me understand how this works, and also Jennifer Bratchwell from the Mayor's Office. I've been studying up on this, and I want to draw your attention to a particular item, and this is 605 is the ordinance. It's under 3.36.030B. And it says, "In the event any tax-exempt entity makes a payment in lieu of taxes to the City of New Brunswick, then in that event, said entity shall be subject to the imposition of the special assessment." Correct me if I'm wrong, the New Brunswick Parking Authority makes a payment in lieu of taxes to the City of New Brunswick. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so if you pass this ordinance tonight, will the New Brunswick Parking Authority pay into the City Market?
Well, I don't think we're going to pay it, too. I mean, we have employees that work for the Parking Authority that actually clean the streets of the City Market.
The section of the ordinance is not changing, it's still in effect. We're just codifying a new chapter. What's really changing from what currently exists is the designated properties attached as the schedule, which shows 2016 as the added properties to be included in the expansion. All the provisions that are in the ordinance are currently in effect now.
I got you. And I want to say I support expanding the district to include the areas proposed, but if what Mr. Shami's saying is true, according to the law, the New Brunswick Parking Authority should be paying into the Special Improvement District. Is that an accurate reading of this law? It says, "Any tax-exempt entity making a payment in lieu of taxes to the city shall be subject to the imposition." Tell me, why hasn't the New Brunswick Parking Authority been paying into the Special Improvement District?
Well, Mr. Cradaville, first of all, Mr. Patterson, did you say you'd like to say it? I'm sorry.
There's a voluntary pilot agreement with the Parking Authority for the Wellness Deck. That's just being proposed to be in here, so they wouldn't have been paying anything previously on that, because they weren't part of the SID. I don't believe there was one with the Farren Mall property, or with the other, just regular parking decks. I don't know that for a fact, but that's my understanding.
I'll just read it again. It says that "Any tax-exempt entity making a payment in lieu of taxes," so it's regardless of which piece of land we're talking about, Farren, or Wellness, or the parking lot behind this building, or the parking lot down the block. If it's owned by an entity that's tax exempt, but makes a payment in lieu of taxes to the city, then it shall be subject. And I've perused the budgets for the past 25 years in the City of New Brunswick, and every year, the Parking Authority makes a payment in lieu of taxes. It should also be noted that the Parking Authority benefits from the Special Improvement District, and in fact, it's my understanding that this part of the money that goes to the Special Improvement District exits the Special Improvement District and goes to pay Parking Authority employees to clean up the downtown. Is that correct?
I don't know if that's correct or not, but I know employees over the Parking Authority work for the markets of the New Brunswick Clean Communities, and they work as cleaning up the district up on the sidewalks. So if there's money going back, then I don't know that.
Second. The Parking Authority does contract with the City Market for street cleaning services. City money is used to supplement part of the City Market budget, but there is an agreement every year struck between Parking Authority and City Market relative to street cleaning. It's beyond City Market. We also contract with, as part of that same contract, we're cleaning on Easton, Fringe, and Remsen also, so it's not just the City Market.
So, and they're not doing it for free, they're getting paid to do it. So, why then is the New Brunswick Parking Authority given a special exemption that does not square with the law? Where they are getting money from the Special Improvement District, but they own land within the Special Improvement District. They make a pilot payment to the city every year, but they're not paying into the Special Improvement District.
I would say the pilot payment that they make, they can add some dollars or some money in there to make part of the money to City Market. What's the last pilot payment they paid? How much was it, you know?
4.5 million.
So I would think with all that money, there's a little extra money in there, maybe, that's a little part of the same thing, maybe, they're going 12, 4, 4, probably, and it's pretty much a chunk of change for a pilot payment.
I agree, so are you promising that some of that's going to go to the City Market?
I'm promising, I said maybe it is, I don't know.
Can you ask?
We're going to ask, listen, we're going to look into it, we'll find out what's going on, and Mr. Shami will look into it, and find out legally what we're doing or not doing, and we'll report back to you in that case.
Okay, are you going to pass this ordinance tonight? Before you have those answers?
Sure, we're going to pass the ordinance. Yes, I don't think that does anything to the ordinance, as far as the service. What we're doing is trying to, more people want to be into the ordinance. You're talking about one person that actually employs people that work for the ordinance, so we're doing good work by having this for these people. So I don't think we want to delay it anymore, and we want to get it out here, and we'll figure out what we're doing with the other part.
Okay, the ordinance is in effect. You did pass the ordinance.
The ordinance is expanding. All you're doing is codifying it and expanding it.
That's a big lawyer's work.
Codifying is for purposes of our code. Thank you.
Okay, well, for the record, I support the way it's written here.
Right.
It just has to be followed. So, on that same note, is Rutgers University, they make a pilot payment every year as well, right?
Mr. Lockland?
I'm not sure I would call it a pilot payment. Many, many years ago, the state of New Jersey made a payment to us for state-owned property in this town. Since that, maybe 15 years ago, they decided to merge that into the other state aid we've got, so it's very hard to track what the value of that is, even if in fact, they are making a payment on tax, excuse me, state-owned, tax-exempt property. The university does make a payment for property out along Westens Mill, then Lawrence Brook, undeveloped land, having that area, but I wouldn't call it, I'm not sure I'd call it a payment in lieu of taxes.
Okay, and can you tell me, for instance, the 1 Spring Street condos and 120 Albany Street, they make a payment in lieu of taxes? Are both of those properties in making payments to the Special Improvement District?
Who are you talking about, 4I Building, Spring Street?
Correct. Spring Street and also the two towers on Albany Street. I believe there's two towers.
Yes, they are.
And Spring Street as well?
Yes.
And the Heldrick, for some reason, gets an exemption as well?
I don't know the particulars on the Heldricks, but can somebody else give that?
The Heldrick, as I understand, is exempted because the property owner is the New Brunswick County Improvement Authority.
Correct.
Thank you.
And I guess the MCIA doesn't make a pilot payment to the city?
I believe that's what he said.
Have to double check that.
We're going to look into it, okay? We're going to look into who's making the payment, who's in part, and we'll get that information, Mr. Cradaville, making the pilot payment, can you give it?
Thank you, and I want to say I support the work the City Market does, and I'd like to see them get contributions from the Parking Authority, since the Parking Authority has just so much money. It's really astonishing that they would own that much land and not pay into it, but take out of it. I think that's not how it should work. If other entities are paying into it, the Parking Authority should pay.
How did you arrive that the Parking Authority has so much money?
You said they can afford a big chunk of change, 4.5.
I said, what was the chunk of change? I didn't say they can afford it, that wasn't my quote at all.
Okay.
That's why you don't get the quotes right all the time, you don't pay attention. What I said was, what was the money that they gave, and you said what it was. Well, you always misspoke, people. It's just.
Do I?
I know already.
Oh, you did.
What I'm saying, I am right.
Could you give me an example?
Well, I just gave you a couple. You didn't get my name right spelled last time. You can't get that right. So, let's just get back to the subject, okay?
Sure. So, I thank you for looking into this. I would just ask respectfully that you give the update at the next meeting, without me having to get up and ask for it, even if I'm not here.
We'll try to get it in an email form.
Email is fine, but it'd be even better to say it out loud at this public meeting, it's a benefit of everyone.
Everybody has a lot of work to do with the city, they all have different other tasks, but we'll certainly try and get that to you before next week.
Yeah, I mean, it could be good if the Parking Authority starts following the law and paying into the city.
Parking, like I said, we can, thank you very much. Anything else on the ordinance?
That is all, thank you.
Anybody else on the ordinance? Seeing none?
Who's the ordinance?
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. We have 606, to amend 606, Orders to amend supplement to revise general orders of the City of New Brunswick, Title 3, Revenue and Finance, Chapter 3.28, Fee Schedule, Section 3.28, 120, Parks and Recreation Fees, amend Recreation Permit Fees.
Mr. Council President, what I would like to entertain, the motion on the resolution to amend the section of that particular ordinance, which is pending second reading, which reads memorial stadium rentals, it was a typographical, well, I don't even know if it's typographical, I think we've just gotten some incorrect information first, where the ordinance now reads three-hour maximum, it should read four-hour maximum, and that's the purpose of the resolution, is to amend that one law. So we need a resolution to amend that. You could ask a public comment before, obviously, we got that, and yet I would ask that you carry this ordinance to the next meeting for second reading.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can I get a resolution?
Resolution, making it four hours instead of three, please.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Before we do that, I want to get any public comment on this, please. Anybody from the public wish to comment on this particular?
Just point of process, just the resolution or the?
The resolution. We're doing the resolution right now.
I'll wait until the ordinance.
Can I get a second, please? For the people of New Brunswick, okay?
John?
Vocal?
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. Now, we would like to have a motion now to take, carry to next, to the second reading. To April 6, for a second reading.[1698.01] Anybody in the public wish to comment on that? We don't need public comment?
This is, this is gonna be my first reading.
Still our first reading, okay. So we're gonna carry that, if any motion in a second for that, please, to carry to the April sixth reading.
So, setting down, um, April third or sixth?
Sixth.
April sixth for public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Barladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. Six oh seven, in order to amend subject, revise the ordinance of the City of New Brunswick, Title thirteen, Public Services, Chapter thirteen point zero eight, Source Services, Section thirteen point eight, three four zero, Schedule A, Schedule charges.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, April sixth, six thirty P M, for public hearings, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Barladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. We now have resolutions, we have resolutions six forty-two to six seventy-three. Would anybody from the public wish to comment on any particular resolutions this evening? Any resolutions? Yes, Sir, Mr. Cradville.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick, in public today. Three one six five nine is, uh...
What's another six five nine?
Six five nine is a professional service agreement with Mr. T. Bolt. Can you just specify, I know I've asked before, what's the special counsel for the police department? Is that for disciplinary matters?
Mr. Chair, now, it's present, that is accurate, it's exclusively for police disciplinary matters, matters related to the police department only, as it relates to those personnel disciplinary issues.
Thank you.
Is there a reason that the police get their own special counsel for this, and that normal, the normal people the city has to deal with all its other employees can't handle this?
Well, Mr. Chair, it's a specialized area of law, it's a, I know Mr. T. Bolt, I know that he specializes in that area, he's very good with not only disciplinary law, but union law, which plays into disciplinary action and personnel work, and the purposes of the specialty.
How many years has been, in effect, that we have, this is the third year we've done this, third year, third or fourth year? Don't quote the...
Don't misquote. So how about the amount is twelve thousand, is that, did, was that comparable to what was spent last year?
I think last year was around ten or eleven, so I got twelve.
And just why is it being passed now in March instead of like the beginning of the year?
The requests came in late through the police, uh, foreign, and we were able to actually gendize it for this meeting, but it is for twelve months' time, so that's why it's not pro ton.
Gotcha. Okay, move on towards the end of the agenda, I gotta ask about six seven zero, is the reappointment of Mr. Simpson, can you, let's try this again, does anybody know Mr. Simpson?
Well, I've met Mr. Simpson once or twice before, I think this is a reappointment, reappointment.
So you met him once or twice before, are you familiar with his work on the board?
Mr. Cradville, I'm not gonna be interviewed, but I did, how I know Mr. Simpson, I just said I met him twice, once or twice before, not gonna be interrogated, how I know him, or when did I meet him, or what did we talk about?
Oh, it's no big deal, you're just appointing him to manage a fourteen million dollar agency then.
Reappointed, reappointed.
Right, right. How long's he been on the board?
Yeah.
How long's he been on the board?
Does he, I don't know, I mean, years, he's been on the board.
It's the second year, I think.
More like six months, six months.
Since he replaced the other, no, I think he's had a performance, Mr. Cradville, must be, since he replaced the other resident on the board that was there.
Yeah, his first meeting was in September, I recall, so that would be, six and a half, seven months, right?
But I've seen him at the board, he seems to be a resident of New Brunswick, and a resident, he uses the services, so, and he's very articulate, very ask good questions, so I think that he's a good asset to the, to the renovation, sir.
Okay, so you were in the room when he defended the authorities charging the low-income tenants of Schwartz, Ferguson, fourteen bucks every time they need new light bulbs? Is that what you think a good housing authority representative does?
I am, no, but I first, I would use Mr. Cradville, because I will subface before, and this is not the forum for that, that's all I'm saying, thank you.
Okay, I'm just raising questions about the person who you're appointing. Seems like Mr. Egan's met him a couple times, not familiar with his work, you're somewhat familiar with his work, but it seems that some of the facts you had were not right. I'd encourage you to reconsider before you put this person on the board for another five years, which would be like ten times as long as he's been on the board. Maybe you should do some research, maybe you could watch the video of the most recent meeting, the other council.
That may, that may be, seems why you don't like him, because you don't like what he did to you in the video.
What did he do to you in the video?
Well, that's what you just said, watched the video, must have did something to you in some video, that's what you're implying, so that's why you don't like him, right?
I mean, you're making assumptions about me.
No, you just made an assumption to us, it seems like we don't, it seems like you don't like him, there's a reason why you don't like him.
I'll be honest, I, I respect what he's trying to do, but I was not happy when he supported low-income tenants being charged fourteen bucks by their landlords for new light bulbs, every time. You think the people there can afford fourteen dollars for a new light bulb? Is it, have you ever known a landlord, have you ever known a landlord in your life that charges you for light bulbs?
This is not the housing law, I mean...
Right, you're just about to appoint someone there for the next five years.
Yes.
Right.
That's correct.
And, and so...
That's correct.
Right, and of course, there was all the confusion about when he was first appointed, that actually, it was really the mayor doing the appointing, and the resolution reflected that, the resolution had to be changed before you could sign it, because the council was abdicating its responsibility to pick people for the housing authority and letting the mayor do it. So I'm concerned that the same history's repeating itself here, you put somebody on the board who, if you paid attention to what was going on with the housing authority, you might have some concerns about, but you're just ignoring it and saying, well, this isn't the housing authority meeting, so we're not gonna, we don't care what happens at the housing authority, is what you're saying.
Thank you, Mr. Cradville, for your interpretation of my feelings.
Back at you. It's important stuff, there's corruption going on with the New Brunswick Housing Authority, it's not a joke. They're ripping off the tenants there, the buildings are falling apart, and you need good leaders to turn that organization around, and just appointing whoever the mayor submits to you is a mistake, and mark my words, it will come back to get you. The next one I wanna ask about is six seventy-two, the Cable Television Advisory Committee, can you tell me, did the board have any meetings in the past year, two years?
Cradville?
In the past year, no.
Learned the past year?
Learned the past year.
And we're gonna have a meeting soon?
Hopefully.
Okay. We'll be hopefully advertised.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Well, I wanna say Ms. Cradville's a good choice for the board, I hope they start having meetings, Mr. Belvin, good choice. I noticed Michael Gluck representing the Board of Education, not familiar with that person, he's not a board member, can you tell me what role he has at the Board of Education?
What do you mean, what does he do there?
Yeah, what's his title?
Uh, I think he works in I T, but I'm not really that sure, does anybody know what Michael Gluck does for the Board of Ed? Does anybody in the Board of Esters, is anybody here?
He's in the I T.
He's in the I T, he works in the I T department, sir.
Okay, so regarding the Cable TV Advisory Committee or Council, they've already expressed their opinion that these meetings should be put on cable television. I've been told that the city's purchased software and technology to be able to do that, I think a year ago at least. When is that gonna happen?
Well, I don't believe there's any timetable for that to happen, uh, I've heard many discussions that I'm aware of. Yes, Ms. Cradville?
No, he's all right, we did. About a year ago, you approved an expenditure for us to redo our skate assist system for our cable access channel, we are still off the air for that, we've been off the air for more than a year. That project is enormous, we are working on it, we are still trying to get it back up and running. I wish I could give you a better time as to when that's gonna happen, but I don't have one right now.
Okay. Is by the end of the year, is that reasonable?
I think, Mr. Cradville?
Ideally, yeah.
Okay, I mean, cable television's been around for decades, and most towns have a channel, and I just know this council in previous incarnations was against having their meetings even videotaped, until my friend Shaw Monahan started videotaping, and then the city started videotaping. I know that the Board of Education has specifically voted against recording their meetings, and last night, I was threatened by security guards to be ejected from the Board of Education for filming it myself in a blatant violation of the Open Public Meetings Act, so I wanna know...
You know that's not gonna happen here, we're your friends here, Mr. Cradville, we won't do that.
I know, we go way back. So this guy, Michael Gluck, though, I don't, I don't know if we, is, is, why, is the Board of Ed gonna put their meetings on TV two, or are they gonna stay in the past?
This is not the Board of Ed meetings, sir, I can't answer for them, so I can't tell you that. All I can tell you is that this is the appointment for the Board of Ed, the representative that we just questioned, and that's who the person is, and is there anything else on this particular resolution?
Well, yeah, is Michael Gluck any relation to the late county prosecutor, Bob Gluck?
I believe he is, yes, I believe that's his son.
Thank you. And then the last one I wanna ask about is the add-on, resolution approving City of New Brunswick to file an application with D E P, what exactly is all this for? I think it's a last-minute addition.
So why, we're getting an application in with the state revolving fund for some low-interest money, it's our intention the next year or two to replace our sedentation basis, it would be a multimillion-dollar project, and just getting our application in their review system is what we're trying to do at the moment, the improvements have not been engineered, we do expect to spend a lot of time engineering that project this year with, hopefully, construction to start in twenty seventeen. Mark, anything? And to that?
If it pleases the council, and I appreciate this opportunity, I would just like to thank you and commend the city for its continued interest in the water system and the large capital improvements that have been made. I'm sure I'm gonna miss a couple, but, I mean, starting with the membrane filtration, which was a huge advance as far as the capacity and the quality water that they're producing, not to mention now the ongoing construction with both of our water intakes, which are huge projects and are on track and are really gonna add to the dependability and reliability of the system. The master plan has been in place for quite some time, and I'd really have to say, you know, commend the council for, you know, keeping these capital projects on track and on time. This improvement will increase our reliability again, plus our capacity to a good extent, and also have a lot of redundancy built in there, so just like to thank you.
Thank you. Well, good job.
Terrific, so just to be clear, the funds would be a loan from the D E P?
It's through the state of New Jersey, they refer to it as a revolving fund, whether it's D E P money or state money, it's, I'm not clear on that, but it's a capital improvement revolving fund that's available for projects like this.
Terrific, and just, can I get a little bit more, closer ballpark figure, multimillion, how many million approximately?
It hasn't been engineered yet, but I'll say it's north of two million.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cradville. Anybody else on the resolutions this evening? Anybody on the resolutions? Zinka?
Resolution.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Barladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. We now have the public portion of the meeting. If anybody would like to come up and address the city council, we have five minutes, the police come out of, address yourself, and name and address. Anybody wanna address the council this evening? Mr. Cradville?
Hello, yeah, I'm Warren. I have to start by asking about the situation with the folks who were improperly in the pension system. Can you tell me, is Mr. Hamilton going to have to repay any of the pension payments he's received?
Who's I could take that, Mr. Chair?
I'd take that. First of all, pension is like personnel, privileged information and documentation, so we can't talk about Mr. Hamilton's pension situation, can't talk about mine for that matter. So to the extent Mr. Cradville wants to answer those questions, can't get into the details of it.
No, we're not gonna comment on that, Mr. Cradville, for personnel reasons, sir.
Okay, I mean, in the past, the city has commented on the accusations, which are very serious, from the state comptroller's office, that people were improperly involved in the pension system, and it seems that the PERS board has agreed, and...
That is all true, that's public information.
Okay, so...
As far as any litigation or anything responsive to that, we cannot comment, because that would be a personnel matter, but what the, what you got from the pension board system is, is factoring.
Okay, and can you tell me presently, though, are any of those attorneys collecting credits towards a pension now that this has been resolved?
I don't know, can we let it tell on that?
Well, first of all, I, I think Mr. Cradville assumes it's been resolved, but I said, you said, and I inferred that it was pending litigation, and the decision by the pension board is not final until it's...
Until, until it's litigated. So it's like an appeal process, like it's like it's like you're in the NFL, and then you got fines, you appeal it, you can still play the next game, so I would believe that everything is still under status quo, that they're all still getting what they're think or what they're entitled to, or what they've been getting until the litigation has been solved or adjudicated.
Well, I mean, that would only be the case if a judge granted a stay. My understanding is the PERS board made a final decision, has litigation even been filed? Has a stay been granted?
I, I don't know that answer, if that's litigation been filed, uh, that's true.
Well, no, that goes to what I'm saying, we're not gonna...
So twelve hundred personnel things going on, right, that's going on?
Sure, are the city taxpayers gonna pay for this lawsuit for the three folks that were improperly in the pension system to try to get the pensions?
Well, I can tell you, no, obviously, there are personal matters with those individuals and the pension board.
Gotcha.
I have to ask a question about the police, is it true that there's a, I guess, a high-ranking guy, sergeant, that is no longer allowed to work serious cases because of lying, credibility issues?
Captain, do you like to comment on what Mr. Cradville just asked?
I would need more details.
Yeah.
Okay.
You have to send more details.
I believe that the person's name is Quick, and they're sergeant. Has that person been removed from one position?
Sergeant, wouldn't be disciplined recently?
No. Not that he would speak on personnel work, just...
Right, well, that...
He has confidence.
Okay, but my question was, has he been transferred to a new position because of this? Is he no longer allowed to work these cases?
I'm not, I'm not dealing with personnel issues.
Okay, cause for concern if, if that is the case.
I think that, I think that everyone, Mr. Cradville said, if that is the case, yeah.
Right, now, how am I supposed to find out?
The police are always, people are always changing positions in the police, there's guys that go from night shift to day shift, to, to anti-crime, to control, to anti-anti-major crime, I guess.
Public information.
What is it?
Public information.
Public information, there's all different variations of, there's all kinds of movements in the police department, daily, I believe.
I, I understand, I just, how am I supposed to find out if this is true? If, if true, it's very serious.
Because you got, I think, I mean, you need more information, you need, you need to be more specific.
Right, so what, police are refusing to give a break?
You're journalists, we need to know who, what, where, why, when, and why you wanna know, all those basic things, and you can email to Captain Miller, I'm sure he'll be, you're entitled to get the information, he'll give it to you.
Right, but what he's saying is I'm not, so how am I supposed to verify?
Well, he also said at the beginning, be a little more specific in your questioning, so maybe he'll be more specific, he'll give you, maybe he'll give you the same answer he gave you tonight, or maybe he'll be able to answer you if you're more specific.
Care to make a wager on it?
No, go, Mr. Cradville.
Oh, sure, okay.
You should know that, if you're more...
So I wanna ask about a very serious issue, is lead poisoning. I know New Brunswick has a decently high rate of children that are affected by lead, sometimes comes from paint, but it also sometimes comes through the water, not from the treatment plant, but from the pipes that connect up to the distribution system. Can you tell me what the city's doing about this?
We need to be more, we need to be more specific, are you, do you know specific Do you know specific problems? Where are we pinpointing that we have a lead problem?
No, I just know we're one of the top ten cities in New Jersey for lead poisoning. And I know that, I believe our rates are higher than Flint, Michigan. So I'm asking, what are we doing about that as a community, as a city? And, you know, like, when's the next time we're doing the lead and copper rule testing, for instance?
Who can help you?
Mark, can you?
Mark, can you help us?
Okay.
Please.
Well, to go through the lead and copper rule, which has been in development with the EPA to DEP for the last twenty years, most of my career, we saw the development coming through. Initially, when the rule came out, system-wide testing was done to set up the baseline for what your water community systems were. If you, once you set that up, then they went into a procedure where they tested twice a year, once in the winter, once in the summer, again, to see where you stood in the ninety percent top. Once you achieved that goal, then you were given a waiver to do it on an annual basis. Once you achieved that goal, then you went on to a three-year cycle. We're currently in a three-year cycle. We committed, we did our testing last year. And again, we were well below the action level for lead and copper. With that said, there is an awful lot of things going on due to Flint. Most of the information that the talking points basically that we're getting from the NJDEP is concerned with, you know, is it lead? Is it coming from the paint, or is it coming from water? And, you know, the vast majority historically has always been a paint issue. Ever since I was a kid, and you may remember commercials where they would have children, you know, peeling paint off of walls and eating it because it has a very sweet taste to it. And it's a very serious issue, so.
I just saw in New Jersey, in New Brunswick, I worked in the New Jersey County Public Utilities School, yeah, the hospital. And there was a high level of lead in the case, and it was from the paint. They basically, most of them, it was full of paint in their old houses. And there were campaigns, and we wanted the city to try to educate the people. And then after that, the issue was like bringing important articles from other countries who are on lead-based, and the community was using, you know, some type of utensils that they had lead paint on it, and they didn't know. So because at one point it was high again, after it went down, it was high again. So that was addressed by, especially in the Latino community, the Mexican community, you know, to use this type of pots to cook because they were, same thing with candy at the dollar store and some of the issues that were coming, especially from candies and from Mexico that had lead. So usually, I'm not saying that the water, I'm not an expert on it, but I know from my years of when I worked, the community of promotion, it was mostly from the paint and other items in that water.
Okay, I think it would be wise to look back at Mr. O'Rourke and his lead testing that he did. I know in 2004, there was a major problem with it. And, you know, in light of what happened with him pleading guilty to public corruption, that's worth another look. And I'd encourage the council and the water utility to look into that 2004 issue with the lead testing here. I need to ask for an update on the New Brunswick Housing Authority. Councilwoman Escobar promised to continue looking into the issues with the parking tickets, people being charged fifty dollars for parking on city streets that they're supposed to be allowed to park on according to the city's ordinances. There've also been these other charges, like the light bulbs I brought up. And ultimately, I know that Ms. Escobar, Councilwoman Escobar, also witnessed the board members, you know, kind of be jerks to me, but also lied to me. They promised that they would get the documents I've requested by the end of the month. Here we are. It's a new month. I've gotten nothing. And now, you know, I'm left with little choice. So can you tell me what's going on with that, the housing authority?
So, I don't wanna go into it too much, but I just to address all the things that you said. Before, you were talking about the law, and then also, you were talking about that all these things that were going, that the units were deteriorating, they're not good. Hunt inspects those units every year. So if there was an issue with that, we're gonna have caught up with it. And it's my lead, my lead when I was there. And after that, I haven't heard that we have been in such standard in that sense. So we give a proper spiritual. The other things, I know you're very aware of, that I meant with residents, of those that you said that they had been putting complaints about the defects and being charged. And as a matter of fact, when we met with them, most of them were fine. You know, they spoke to the director, the secretary director, they had addressed the issues that they had. They were explaining what is the process that the house authority has if there's an issue that they have. And actually, most of them received a response, to my understanding, from the secretary directors in terms of their concerns. And as a matter of fact, I was shown a thank you from one of them that they sent. And thank you for doing that. So I think that we have been pretty proactive, and we've been pretty proactive. So I take a little bit, you know, I know that you're eager, and you mean well, but you have to also be fair when you report and when we talk about the house authority. And you are making allegations of corruption. I haven't seen that, so I can't say that that is true. If it comes out, because apparently you have some of this information. So I think, you know, you have to be able to be careful with the words that we use. And the other thing is that in terms of the documents that you want, and you were promised those documents by the end of the month, and even before they were able to give it to you, you already had litigation against the house authority. So you didn't even wait until the end of the month to get those documents. You already had a lawyer already put in. So it's hard to say that you didn't wait. You were very patient, and, you know, you were very understanding, but you just made a statement like that, you didn't give it to you. No, you took it, even before you waited, the end of the month.
They're free to give it to me any day they like.
And again, they explained it to you, and you are the lawyer, and that means that you waited until the end of the month, and you put... And I think I was more upset about that being the way you felt that you wanna kind of put it together. So that's what I have to comment in terms of that. But again, you know, just let's be, you have to be a little bit more broad in terms of what we say, be careful what you say, because like I said, you made some statements there, but without a whole reason behind it because you know that I've been being respectful and fine.
Sure, sure. Have you looked into the allegations about someone living there illegally? Have you looked at the video I asked you to look at?
That's you. I have not. I have to be honest with you. I gave the information that you gave because I don't know what you want me to do with it. I'm not a police officer, I'm not an investigator. I gave that information to John Clark. So I'm sure he that he will follow that because it's hard that you put a name, and I don't know who this person is. I'm not gonna be mentioning that he did something unauthorized or illegal, but I don't know anything about it. So that's the hand, so they have John Clark. So he's the one that he should follow, you know, that he should follow the question. And if there's something that I should not bring, you should not have told me. And as you know, I'm a manager, they do the operations of the city house authority. So I just say, I said, yes, and if something comes up, I try to help out, which is like I said, especially when it comes to the residents, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just say, I'm not somebody who can be pushed around. If I ask for something and the law says I'm entitled to those documents within seven business days, and it takes more than four months for me to get simple documents like receipts and bills from out-of-state travel that commissioners and employees are going on, that's a problem because that information is not hard to produce. So it begs the question, why isn't it being produced? There's nothing stopping the housing authority from producing this information, these records. In fact, the law says they must.
And you asked me, you're right.
And when can I expect it? They lied to me. They said I would get it by the end of the month.
Again, you asked me for always fifteen years of records.
Five years in this case, twenty ten.
And when you asked for so much more, the same thing that you took with us here, that you asked. So you have no, because you have been in touch with a lawyer of the house authority all this time, and you have been agreeing all of you, you know, you and the, that you wanna wait, that you're gonna produce. I don't know, there's only like, Mr. Cradville, you're agreed to wait for the documents. You have been very patient with the house authority. I give you that. So, and they are aware that they have to be done by law. And that's why they have been communicating with you, I'm sure.
Well, what's going on? Are they shredding them? Are they making up only ones? Why is it taking so long?
This is something for the house authority.
Okay, I think it's a matter of community concern for everyone in New Brunswick. If the low-income residents of those projects are being fleeced or money is being stolen or wasted at that authority, and you should all care about it. You should be at the next meeting, all of you. Because just watch the last meeting and tell me that that's how a public body is supposed to behave. That's not...
And they're not projects, they're residents, okay? Complex, not projects. Thank you.
Pretty sure they're called projects sometimes.
No.
No?
But go ahead.
They're not?
Okay, no.
The word's not used? Well, last question. There's an ethics hearing tomorrow, an ethics meeting tomorrow. Can you please, through the chair, ask Councilwoman Garladi if she plans to be there?
Ms. Garladi, would you like to answer that question?
I don't...
She does not plan to be there.
Okay, can you ask her in that case, does she have any response to the ethics complaint against her?
I believe she can...
No, she doesn't.
I believe Ms. Garladi is represented by council, and it would be inappropriate for her to...
We're gonna say that for that.
And I understand her council has been dealing with the ethics.
And the hearings tomorrow night?
There is a hearing tomorrow night.
So you'll find out if you're in tomorrow night?
There's a meeting tomorrow night. I'm not even sure what's on this.
So why don't you go to the meeting tomorrow night, you'll find out.
I will. So it may or may not be a hearing.
I don't know the agenda. I don't...
You don't know the agenda?
Okay, and can you just tell me, can you identify the councilwoman's representative, her attorney?
Would you like to identify the attorney that's representing Ms. Garladi?
I might remember now its name. I know...
Gregory Costanza Jr.
There we go.
There you go.
I was gonna say Costanza, but I...
George Costanza Jr.
Gregory, I'm sorry.
Cuntanza.
Co...
Cunt.
Cuntanza.
It's Costanza.